Was to make some steps about providing security for the people. Would like to know exactly how this has progressed with the issues announced at home and intervention to main consideration.
Thank you very much. First, I would like to express my profound gratitude for this opportunity to engage with my dear people of Enugu State. So it is indeed with great pleasure that I welcome all of you here this morning to this town hall meeting. And this is consistent with the promise we made to people. Recall that just immediately after I was sworn in as governor, I went straight to the entire museum and signed three executive orders. And one of those orders was the citizens charter. And the citizens charter speaks largely to what we are witnessing here today. That our government will be about the people and that everything we're going to do, the money we're going to spend, your money will be spent, will be spent in your interest. And that we're going to be transparent, we're going to be accountable, and we're going to provide information to transparency, accountability, and accessibility. If you recall, was at the core of our governance philosophy. And so this is truly your event, it's not a day for speeches. It is a day for us to hear from you, get your feedback. We made massive promises to you when we sought your hand base to govern you. We promised to grow the economy of Enugu State from the current level to an exponential level. We met around a GDP size of 4.4 billion dollars. We promised you in the next 40 to 80 to grow that GDP to 30 billion. We also said to you that we are mission to make Enugu State the preferred destination for investments, living, tourism, and business. So, and of course, we also recognize that those promises, if we went by the trends and the growth pattern we've had over the years, it would almost be impossible to accomplish that. If you have an economy that has grown largely at 3% to 4% rate, and you're committed to say you're going to grow this economy at over 100% rate, it must mean that you have, you must be able to show the things we're going to do differently. Which was why we said we're going to deploy disruptive innovation in executing the programs and projects we have expressed to you. We said to you that if we're going to grow this economy to the size we've promised you, that a lot of it will be driven by private sector, but it's going to be enabled by government. The government will have to provide the environment for the private sector to thrive. Which was why, as soon as we came in, we recognized and identified the challenges of security as the biggest elephant we have in the room, and we knew it was imperative we address that. Recall that we made very consequential pronouncements, and we had to mobilize the security agencies who worked with us, indeed, day and night, work tirelessly for us to have the state of security that we have today in Enugu. Of course, our job is far from done. We recognize that we're still dealing with some breaches here and there. But we've also gone on to put in place measures that allow us to ensure we identify, track, capture, and defeat the criminals. You know, we had to immediately set up the DRS, the Dispress Response Squad. And then we went on to commence the installation of CCTV across our metropoles. And today we are almost 80% done. In a few weeks, we're going to be commissioning what is going to be the most modern command and control center. And we're going to have a line of sight of what is happening in our state. So we're able to leave the security challenges in the board, we're able to identify these crimes before they happen. You also know that in Osowa, Enugu, we're currently working with the Navy to establish a Navy base there. In this user, where we have some dark spots, we're also working with the Army to set up a military barracks, the Army Barracks Bay. We already have deployments of the military there. And so those locations outside the metropoles were identified as flashpoints. We have also set up FOB, the Forward Operation Base Is there. And so, of course, security, as I said, was identified as the biggest element. But again, you also have to provide infrastructure for businesses to thrive. So we recall, we committed to the provision of water within a timeframe of 180 days. When we came in, we were generating less than 5 million liters of water daily. Our current production capacity has gone up to 120 million liters days. So we're able to produce from our two water scheme, the one in Naita and the other in Ojiluba. The combined production capacity we have from those two water schemes today is 120 million liters. Of course, we recognize that there are still some challenges with making sure that the water gets to the last mile at the downstream side of things. We're working on this, and there were things that we could have recently foreseen when we made these commitments and when we made these promises in terms of making sure that once you turn the back and you're here in Enugu metropole, the water will be running. We recognize that there were challenges, so we have three levels of the downstream. We have the primary and the secondary lines, and we have the tertiary lines, which is essentially the distribution line. The something we did have revealed that we were okay with the primary and the secondary lines, and we needed to deal with the tertiary lines, which is from the various hangers to the various homes. And we did that. Again, where the baths were turned off, it became obvious towards that we still had to deal with the challenges of the water pipes on the primary and the secondary lines. It was so bad that in some cases, even where you thought the lines had been done, we only found out after we had opened the ground that there were some gaps even in the pipeline. You have a pipeline that gets to a point and it's blind front, and then you have pipes continuing from another spot. So there were challenges, but that is essentially what you have elected us to do, to deal with those challenges. So we are facing them front and rear. And the way we've seen the challenges of the water sector, we're treating it like a martial law now to declare the state of emergency as CEO. So we're working day and nights to make sure that we get our water to the last mile in all the households here in Enugu metropole. Of course, we had a number of industries, you know, Enugu had played very consequential roles in the history of this country, and it was at one point the economic hub of this country. And we had quite a number of industries. And we are already working on activating those industries. You may have noticed that there's work currently going on on the international conference center. In few months, the conference center will become functional. And this whole thing are deliberate. When you see the work we're doing, whether in the different segment of infrastructure, whether it's road, electricity, water, transportation, we are looking at helping these businesses that we are inviting to come and invest here in Enugu, not only to provide them the environment, but to help them to risk some of the things that will make it impossible for them to come. So if we're looking at people who would want to come here and set up their business, and we know that we have to make transportation easy for them, whether by flight or road, we get involved. So which is why we are working currently with the Federal Ministry of Aviation to operationalize the international wing of our airport. To expect very soon to have not just the international wing of the airport working or functional, but we're also expecting to have the capital timing up to do something we're working on. So the stuff I think we are doing to grow the second part, I'm sure you will also be wanting where we're finding that. I'll come back to that later. Because recall, we said that we're going to marry what 1,250 kilometers of road every year, which means over 10,000 kilometers of road for over 40 to 80 acres that we're going to have. That's if you are managing it forward. So the wrong thing over a perennial road and road is also deliberate. Our objective is to make sure that all the roads, this is from Enugu cities, with all the roads have been to make, we would not state any road, we would not respect that there will be a road in our metropole that is not famous. So the current model of it, one of those roads signed in the city executive and where it also currently working about 10,000 kilometers. But again, our objective is to make sure that we have a road protection across all the waters. So I have instructed by the ministry to make sure it's cooked, all the roads that are young men who have been applying a road protect in each one. Our objective is to make sure that we achieve a minimum of 20 kilometers of road in this one. So we're coming down at the end of the next year, we're going to be having a minimum of 2,600 kilometers which goes construction. And which kind of is set in our board. Again, in the area of the, I'm not going to try to so keep this from this, I don't think that was a bad intention. It's not easy for white people. Because of course, the community allows us to go out here and about and get your, a different sector we have been in. I'm not sure if they can see from now on to you about that. When, there's something that is quite profound here. And also I mentioned that how we need to speak the problem for you to build your voice through their economy. What we're doing to the education of the current government sector. We might get inspired to their education as we know of that, the GDP size of 400,000, 400,000 dollars. So we recognize that we're going to achieve this new, that I said, 400,000 yet down. We also create to you that we are mission negative for today's case, to prepare us tackle the national education and the crisis we have in the education department from that. And which is essentially what we have done. We are constantly constructing, recognizing the smart schools, those across the 283 local government. When, with, sorry, 234, we are working on that with 135. So in 135 schools to be, those smart schools who they are calling. And before the end of, before they work as like, end of next month, and what we need to avoid in the world, so to 100,000 that will my life was. So we're going to have the entire, to most of these, smart school now, moving projects, going on there. Our objective is going to be to ensure that these smart schools are, because of all of the showing of the good time, from September to August, in 2021. So you might think that we're so aspirant to you about the construction of the infrastructure. Let's start out just the infrastructure. If we're going to, by identifying to the time, possibly in the future too, where we're charged, which will be driven whether against like, no grace and on case, which is enabled where we have orientment about 20%, and target their mind as if it were going to move back to the right of the trial. Where we have, and what we're attempting to see on this school, we've also set aside an obsession, identify that it's beyond challenging faces you're facing school as which it gets, which is by compare to the other schools. Blowback and we need to provide a free, a mandatory education, because of the educational pressure of the grandchildren of the balanceless. And we need to empower people thinking that the security of the agency, we're going to have to whereby the law, which is the need of policy play and which people are trying to do. So what I will say, we are, we are doing that in early charge in lending in all our smart schools. So the smart schools provide, of course, to see, are to arrest to their parents, children from age 12 and put them through the fire, by my side, where we expose them to the education which very quickly, normally, could operate. So we also are getting, going on to put in place, measures. So and this allows us to be found, ensure that they find a skill triangle where job and disease are the only skills. So imagine we're going, you know, we have the state, where we, the students, where teachers have been impressed responding not sports, it might, or spread them away from, to go to one where we now have a sense, smart job, to teach a position where a kid is being taught at the school. A kid who struggles to apply in most of the sector down, and in a different mode to give him a role. So it goes from there, giving them the path, it's to walk both to. With taking this view that we're going to have the, I should say, of being a, ever since the happening of the new city of Asit, of the invention, where we, the inventing spirit that we need to be able to ever have a work and have children, she's running at that level. So in education, they can help, also, also doing something right from there. We're building, Osowa, the 206 currently have running out in the 2000 of KES passage. And this is the game we have for the entire, to see what is used on. All I want to do, we're going to have a, for a step up, there is a bit back, and we have to have to power additional. It's already made by, before the end of the season, the short, the hard, the hard, it's already have, it's already two of 200 of KES. They already have the priority of primary of K S S. So that, so that we know that we have a chance to be able to have their set five, we recognize that rush on our time also to think of in a scheme that we have done as well, but we should work with our best to design it. And so with some of the other kind of workers that they do, so they follow to have as a contract, they get from them. For the game, we have already had a team, a water, a structure. The university is a nursery track, college and the nursery room, we have an impressive, what is the promotion that we want to see somewhere? In the past, we were one thousand three thousand before the end of the year. When we begin with the year, we're currently constructing a great new new, less than five million meter ourselves of our parents' school of nursing. So our current culture as a group today has turned on to one hundred and twenty diversity, where we have a head of children. And the greatest thing for you now also to go to brainwave and also now to white is of them to make sure that our former management manager, a hundred percent of my production, that's to help personnel. So I'm going to ramp up by largely saying that all this is, we recognize that event, the last place of land, where we, yes, we're making sure that here from the water gets to the last man from you and how we have developed the things we need to work on, to bring to the workforce. And this is a company where we're going to actually talk about the, we could have a present event, the feedback we're going to get because you're ready to make this not weekend and whether it was for doing that from there, because at the end of only talking about, we are standing here in all that we have done while we're doing, we recognize that we are two years old, so we have to have lots of not something to get from, we have the show and the right to social. We have to, again, I want to mention the event.
Thank you so much for listening to the campaign. That's why I'm here today. If you wait there, I'll listen to what I'm telling you. Because I came with the last thing is we got to there and those who are like that, I'll take, I'll take that to question from my knowledge, then I'm going to to the audience.
For so far, in some cases, even where you thought the lines had been done, we only found out after they have opened the ground, the gas. There were some gas even in the pipeline, you have the pipeline that gets to the point and the black branch, and then you have pipes continuing from another port in the wet type. But that is essentially what you have mentioned us to do, to deal with those that are using it. So we are helping them accept that. And the way we're speaking, we challenge you to the water project, we are truly meaning to fight this in martial, it's not now, to create the state of the martial arts. So we're working there and I have to make sure that we get our water to the land first in all, like I said, here, that is. Of course, we have a number of individuals that, you know, in this game, have played very consequential roles and the history of this country. And in fact, we want that one part, the other result of this country. We have quite a number of individuals who have, and we are already working on activating those resources. You may have noticed that, and the work is currently going on in international conference center, it seems most, the conference center will become emotional. And this all thing, thank you very much. When you see the way we, that was, I said that in the different set measure of the strategy, whether it's growth, cannot some electricity government and more than that, and education, that it is sounding out, looking at the citizens helping with national, that we, for a nice to provide the best that we're going through, the amount of resources to help them, but to help them, our highest, what some of the things that will make this impossible for them to help citizens, so when they're working in the design and people with operation and set out their landings, and let them know that in some shape, transportation, whether by flying, how we get in or out. So the social, we are working currently with the Federal Ministry of Aviation, we are operationalizing international, we need to, for, very soon, as not just the international, we are trying to work in so much, so we're also expecting to have the capital and the support, which is something we're watching in other areas. So, so the subject we were thinking was growth of segments, actually, so that we're finally, now come back to that data. Because we're going to be part of one hour, two hundred and thirty units of to give very small, we're making, because it's ten hours and that, over, which is about eighty eight that, uh, travels and that's really a lot and higher for the people that see this really low level. So it's a lot of things of our, those, yeah, perhaps so, very, uh, our objective, we will make sure that all the roads in any hard regions, so that where all the roads have been at this, and showing everyone, so we share them with any road, we will not neglect and prove that we are in a situation that has a relation to your. So we're currently working on eighty one or hundred roads and it concludes seventy six, doing halfway, and also currently working on about ten roads in our area of the, but again, just our objective, we have to make sure that we have a road road, road road, what we gave the, 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 the nation in the, also those that, we don't know how many five, we don't know if they eat more or less, I'm trying to be sure that I can achieve a minimum of thirty nine classes on two ways, each one. So between now and the end of next year, we're going to be having a minimum of two thousand six hundred kilometers constructed, which is constructed, we are on. Again, this is a scenario, and I'm sure this is a, and I'm not going to try to lose this piece of the island to allow you and to, because if you allow to go on to talk about the different sector of the, and also they are not going to be not going to be talking about it. For something that is going to be found, we have one of our eventual that our, nicely, the problem for the education question, what we're doing in education and health sector. We've identified education as a concept in ways to fight. And so we have the mind that electricity is going to achieve the zero energy, four hundred and fifty kilograms of spring, as we can estimate, and for to get emissions, we must tackle, you know, the issues in the crisis we have in the education sector, which is essentially what we have done. We are currently constructing the smart schools across the two hundred and sixty four. Look up that question. So we, two hundred and sixty four, we are working for the hundred and fifty five, as for the hundred and fifty five, what if you want to do it in this sense, and I'm sorry, I'm. Before the end of the week, uh, before the end of next month, we're going to go to the balance of two hundred and thirty five. So we're going to have a entire two hundred and sixty four. And what that means is to move it through the, our, our jetty, before to ensure that this was very smart, that it's all operational from time being September, beginning of the season. And so the nice thing that we're so, we have our, about the construction of the infrastructure and what is possible, that will remind us of the G group framework to set up, we're going to see all the things we need to keep on commission, where we are charging you just whether you're ready by farmers, either on the, and light in that, where we have space, currently, but it's the game, that was the target, that I said, we're going to need to highlight from this setting of this framework. When we have, and what we're doing in the smart school framework, as always, bodies and such, because it's not just the nine day wave basis, uh, which is what is expected, globally, combined in three, and then to manage it, not just education, this is basically the cause of the fault. And now that we can really ignore the impact of, of, where we are, right, to us, we show, or we show to the society of the mission. So I'm including, I said, every child, let one of that smart schools, increases our, to find generativity capacity for us, and also to measure that gate to right, and put them into the right, right, to the goal, where we're exploring that, that's going between now and tomorrow, and they have an end of forty nine, twenty six, elevation here to have, as it's changing, electricity from here to add up, our system, to, to, what is happening here on the morning, that we're not fully captured, or we're not, by, sadly, in education that, where teachers, uh, at once, the current structure, the not to be late, in time, so, how to, to, to generate enough time, authority for the businesses here, and elsewhere, and, and then starting to think about how to, to find, to, 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 to,[1282.48] workers to give us the money. So please, it's something that we think very seriously. So why don't the discussions of the teachers, of the people who are pushing doing, we start at how we have time, while we waste our time, as you know, the issue of, the salary has to discuss nationally collectively, not something in state and judge. But we welcome to have you the salary, a lot for a worker, and that was, that was, and I've seen said, as long as the minimum wage on the team is a lot issued, have one issue there, the social and the bringing one which we're going to continue to take the salary away. So thank you, 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 thank[167.28]
Have we want to make us communist? We tell you.
Comments or questions?
Comments and questions. We have just a second. We have a request industry. I'm sorry. And we thought you.
The rule says it doesn't want questions. It's true to your point. Thank you.
Your excellency so pleased that.
Are we?
In the business committee. We recognize that everything is shown in economy.
I can't.
Based on the.
I want to use this completely.
Not you mean responsible government?
I'm just saying.
...and professional and second school students. And here I am, to be here today, with you, Dr. Chukwudi. And let's ask the education to also be a link in our potential. Why are you present at the SIA also meeting? And we have a lot of skills that are brought in there. Where would the罗马斯口的smart teachers go? And we bring them in, by saying it is more carefully conceived, you know, to produce and do our very best at the end of the year. And to quickly see how also powerful of people to achieve with both nature and politics, we mentioned those of whom we would so love. Women, thank you for all your generous comments, particularly kind words, expressed. Women, thank you as well, as you have been present this important time.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Now we will ask you again about his excellency. 罗马斯口的女孩子们， 罗马斯口的女孩子， 我想说， talk about the handful of us. That is when you were told to do to the罗马斯口. We have four questions, yes, one is still there, which is very important. You lived the question of how women can execute this form from a business.
Well, it means my own advice, by some official, if we're going to have a good, a tough, a spent, a presenting one, I thought Nigeria, maybe we said that.
Happy to expand the chat.
Private sector, for any state to appreciate.
Thank you so much, Dr. Chukwudi. What you have, if you want to explain as capital.
We need this on figure, especially in Nigeria to say.
Four months and four times.
Private sector is also very important and precious. For these that have been teaching us, are doing our own thing, to join us with respect, to make sure that every child in any state get the best, so that we can compete with other mother's powers. The challenge we have is private sector pockets, if we can get the more. We are the private sector company in this smart school that is on board with the government state. And how we can be part of, as a mentor, to get access to it and to get our sector in fact. And then, with the challenge this year, I'm facing the private sector, what people are saying. Very large future, proper trends now. It's from an auto, one fifty one sixty, seventy thousand and five or forty thousand. Is a big challenge of education sector in this state. We are by women's inside the world, at the end of the day, it is dedicated to various terrorists, which is pure lies. How has government assist private sector to ensure, private sector education, they want to ensure that maximum position of child development in education is actually maybe like this activity.
Thank you. Next question. On the other sector, where we have enhanced quality of services?
Why are we watching that? Dr. Chukwudi, and your contact.
And representing the candidate.
I consider you are the association of future scholars and professionals on the project, and they lose their job. Excellency, I'm quite excited about this smart school.
You.
And that's the area that I'd like to focus on, question of you. And how do you have smart teachers? Because we're given sustaining the smart schools, with us smart teachers is not a problem. We have, and they have, the kind of people who are likely to want, or want to serve the program, opportunities where this smart school is allocated. So what program was the others they thought they had? To sustain, professors ought to try it, and to, you know, sustain this smart teachers. Because I see from your government, I tell you that I listen to you, I remember the words of those people, can only take a couple of teams, and this is a leader who necessarily does not want to take people where they want to be, or where they want to go, where they ought to be. So, Excellency, what is the policy that is in place to make sure that we sustain this smart school even beyond your territory?
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any students, any student sitting around, you have students and youths, who would like to take from their part of the work we are giving? So, I would not believe that we can. We, we would keep, thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead and ask.
Thank you, Excellency, for this wonderful opportunity. Mr. Okike is running, and the charity, who we take to our national association. I am glad today I'm accompanied by nice teachers, and soon you'll come back to president in the board of the charity stations here in Abu Dhabi. Excellency, on behalf of all in Nigeria State, in Abu Dhabi, would love to extend our appreciation and gratitude for your commitment towards education. We cannot over-recognize the decision of your government for allocating thirty percent of the state general budget to education. And we are very grateful for that. Your Excellency, we want to draw your attention to the African States scholarship board. We understand that your administration is just kicking off, and you have a lot on your list. But scholarship for students is still of paramount importance. I want to wish to you, Excellency, to do something to retrieve that opposition that has given opportunities to thousands of students in the past to actualize their dreams and their academic careers. Your Excellency, we also want to remind you of two shop keys, especially in state own tertiary institutions. Want to remind you that the hardship that has spared Nigeria and our state is one that has brought so many bad feelings and has strained a lot of families already. I want to let you know that if there's any plan for you to reduce two shop keys, especially in state tertiary institutions, we're very grateful to you that I'm here. Excellency. But this is a very strong, deserving citizens of my nation. They are in all kinds of ways, to bring up a debt for distinguished citizens, to foster the effect of this still move on. We also want to express, we are not happy with the fact that the student community was completely removed. Because, Excellency, more than any other group, the student community is entirely obvious, and it's more than any other organization. Excellency, please, do something about providing a debt for the students.
Thank you, please. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, my dear friends. We love you. Thank you. Thank you, my dear, Excellency. We want to.
Your Excellency, I, I believe you, from whom, in the water, before, and in the kitchen, you know, you know. Your Excellency, we commend your effort, on your achievement. First, you have, you have read all the leaders, and those good leaders, they are not in charge now. So, your effort was to make sure that we have huge, greater skill, and it's a dominant. Also, you said that I can tell that, they are proud of all your efforts, towards restoring the peace and the unity of the Lord's. And also, you also have paid, that first, by the athletes, if they are weak, and they will never have a force that will sustain that, for the athletes to be used, going to walk, and they are going to, they are weak. Also, you also, which to suggest, which those others, awareness, you made it your effort, don't to let go of. Like, if they do be still, if that's you, don't be a politician, it is also. By this, you also said that, you do this, you give this effort in front of the traditional companies. And the last thing, most of our nice, and the representation are nearby. You know, I, I think those, for me, this effort, to you, to have that, that.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, we now have to, Excellency, for a certain time to respond to you once raised so far. Your Excellency, of course. Thank you. Thank you very much.
For all the men and women in this state, we would love to extend our appreciation and gratitude for your commitment towards education. We cannot over-recognise the decision of your office by allocating 30% of the state's general budgets to education. And we are very grateful for that. Your Excellency, we want to draw your attention to the 30 states of the country. We understand that your administration is just kicking off, you have a lot of your... The machine was too late, it's still of paramount importance. I want to speak to your Excellency to do something to retrieve that organization that has given opportunity to parents and children to utilize their dreams and their academic careers. Your Excellency, we also want to remind you of two short things, especially in the informed national institutions. We want to remind you that you had children that are still in Nigeria and our state. It's one that has taught so many bad feelings and has trained a lot of minors in it. I want to let you know that you did a great plan for you to reach such a special achievement. And we appreciate that. Very grateful to you. Thank you.
So we are clearly aggressive in a lot of smart...
This is the first time this has existed in my generation. There are no parents who are... And that's a big part of it. So the youngest citizens, to us, when you break this rule. We also want to express the knowledge of the fact that the student community was completely... Because, your Excellency, more than any other group, the student community is entirely obvious by this. More than any other organization. It's actually simply, you're simply a bad man.
Thank you. Thank you. That's my thank you. Your business is all about this. With, uh... Thank you, thank you, thank you for this celebration, we love you, thank you. On the particular sector, that sector, thank you, I want to say your recognition. And that's what we do, we do. Anywhere. The other side is that if you look at the people who work for you, they are all... And where are the children who are from each side? Uh, so when you think of, we recommend this for effort, we're doing a lot of this, I stopped you with, first thing. You have right on, you put in a lot of, and that's the one that we want to entertain you as a part. You know, in a time, you, so, uh, keep your effort, your orders, so we, we need to... The, 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 also, you tell that I should tell you that... Yeah, well, of course, it's good, you want, but you want it to be, of peace. I would, I would, to, uh, another, so, we can, we feel so, I'm there.
...expressed also with kind words and... Do you trust generous ones which programs such as... We are executing in the same... Which those others, I want to assure you, I want to... You let your health of our home to everyone. By doing their duty, if you do your duty and done most of our efforts and opportunities such as... Why do you so? You want to settle that do back and have you, you know this, finish yourself there for us. Being in our family, I have a wish on my, I have a wish to ensure that it fits. My thought was to ask, I have a wish to ensure I get back. Yes, but in some part, I think those who are here, they do not want to... That's another thing that we need to do. And we thank you very much. The Excellency, I would like to tell you two things for three. One is a question from following persons here from the traders, the market people who are here. We also think about the house and community, we also think about the Christian Association of Nigeria. And I want to thank all of the... Thank you for comments, not any complaints. And also, the Excellency, uh, my... I'm very proud of you, you have a lot of... You have a lot of... And the Excellency, I want to appreciate you for all of your good work. For having us all the same of with one or two, uh, development projects in both areas, in both sectors in every state. With the others, I'm promising you, I'm going to give you our maximum support. The Excellency, thank you, what also, thank you very much. And the others, we have said that... In the view of, you mentioned that, uh, in ancient, two sixty clouds in the every state. In both of our... Those children before the elections, we had to do as a game with the union. We did that what you want. When we invade our markets, by giving tomorrow once or in a year, then all the markets in every world. And you can't, thank you. My friend is talking about the Excellency, what, many of his story, my dear, for the... So, when you're doing, you're saying that in the name of Jesus, so that only behind me is a position. Beyond all in my life, they say, what do you mean by religion? Meeting, meeting... Some of us is believing. Here today, this is what I have doubt, and the state has got it a problem. Getting that came back this afternoon from Israel to visit where that was, um, this whole thing of water. Thank you very much, everybody, and said, uh, say this much, to... Kind words, and they were having a very... For the... And the Rangers, yeah. So, yes, in our video, the Excellency showed that also within the last four or two weeks. But the daddy Muhammad was in there, the under Muhammad science to show him the appreciation. I thought that he wanted to hear the Excellency, who is the chair, uh, representative to our nation, the Excellency. Uh, John, to bring, uh, chat back to us, uh, for our values in Houston and that for trading in Nigeria. And so, and he shows his appreciation and at the point in the day of that, uh, by both, uh, obviously, the binding of the... That makes the announcement of picking products from easy to southeast and some square, the change of position. Thank you. We're going to have to... Thank you very much. It's for real, and I wish to that the Chair of I Bar to talk about this. The Excellency, as you know, the... This is one from, from, actually, uh, I am the leader person, Chairman of Fire. But I, they did, they asked to speak of your, I, the interpartite advisory council, in the... My name is Zayas, I can be here. Of course, the interpartite advisory council... Thirty-three percent. You are presenting, uh, what is a perception, a gratitude. It's not... To the Excellency, for they true, to this country, the Excellency, who they are so... And, uh, also thank you, sir. Forty-three to twenty-five. If you are straight to your team of the two, the new that the interpartite advisory council has given us an experience. When one of your team members, this place is adding one of these rooms. And in that case, we are about the special assistance of both of us on your track. We are aggressive. So, the Excellency, the cast of what we want is, we want to know, the direction of the government. Because, I show you, and they not common system relation with that, because we, the... Because as it were, they tell of the, the government chairs, and they swear, and they, they get... Who are both these way, and not, they want, they want to offer that company of the year, thank you so much. Thank you, a final question coming from the Christian Association of Nigeria. Good challenge, we're working on ours. Thank you for your blessing, I'm working on mine. I hope you have, uh, the Christmas, especially, uh, the... The one we have, we have, uh, already, uh, challenge, uh, challenge in the same way, for the right decision. You, you already for that, the more that the law has been, I start with the first thing. If I want to start by education, a competition, this is a competition, yes, they continue to, to... They are taking it, they are taking it, to track down as long as it's okay, and if you are right, they go. It was really hard to take time, in that, in the whole group of the test. I say, uh, isn't the Excellency, the workers of the town, to make sure that those which have happened with this picture, you started to this, for the track down. And they stop from, if you are going to search, that we are prepared for this. Before, that your promise of providing us with this, for one day, that I want you to find those I think, which are... I like to present it, so even though, uh, it is still promised there, we will escape. And I say, in the deep, and the... The purpose of this, is to... And you, uh, uh, you... What, what, what? That comes from the... I... The... The... I... 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 This is, thank you, please, in the... The Excellency, in the... We are here to see, we are here to... Something I will see, lastly, because I can not prove the mind for what I have dedicated. And then, to the Excellency, something very important, in this new radio, about smart system, uh, the... The last time, of the months, of the religious people, the French, something that we might also like to... The governor, Saka, and New York, uh, to manage that, uh, they very, very... We also want to have the attention, that who, who should pass a year for the camera, the... The... Or, if you say, you need a gun, a spear, now, if it's a...